Welcome everyone to the October 15th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since approximately 6:31 PM. We were discussing litigation, receiving advice from counsel, and discussing the employment history of particular persons. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I move.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Please follow some pledge allegiance led by. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for your patience tonight. We appreciate it. Sorry we were slightly delayed. Okay, I'm just getting my glasses here. Okay, tonight's president's report. Just a couple of brief items. One, I know it was a little while back on October 5th, but we haven't had a meeting since then, and I really very much wanted to give a big shout out to Dawn Greenberg and the spectacular job that was, that the entire staff and Dawn and everyone did in connection with the Chappaqua Children's Book Festival. If anyone was there, it was really phenomenal. I myself learned that it really is the largest children's book festival in the tri-state region. We had approximately 145 to 150 authors there. It was a perfect day. There were food trucks, there was a bake sale. It really was an unbelievable event. We're incredibly lucky to have that in this town, so I did see Dawn tell her that personally, but I really wanted to say that again this evening. It was fantastic and we're very lucky. Today we had Superintendent's Conference Day. Christine will talk about our speaker here. That we were fortunate enough to be at the keynote with George Kuros, not Soros. And it was really, really wonderful to see that keynote address, but I'm sure Christine will mention that. I also did want to talk about the upcoming visit from Mark Brackett on October 21st. Mark will be talking to the community about social and emotional learning in our schools. He is the head of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. A lot of us have seen Mark before. It's really, really worthwhile to see some of the emotional, social emotional learning that he is bringing into our school through the Ruler System. He's a really dynamic speaker, so I'm really encouraging people to attend. That's October 21st from 6:30 tonight at Greeley. And the last item that I did want to mention tonight, in terms of like an innovative mindset that George talked about today, we're embracing that here on the Board. We are moving forward tonight with our first go-to consent agenda. And for those of you who have sat through our Board meetings before, you know that we typically go through our contracts and our business procedures one by one and discuss them, but many Boards really do a consent agenda, which is a Board practice whereby we, you know, group together routine contracts and business items together in one single agenda item that's voted on together. Obviously, people can discuss anything on that consent agenda, something can be pulled off if people really feel that it shouldn't be there and it needs to be addressed separately. It's for efficiency. It also speeds things up for routine matters and allows us time to focus on other more important items, so we are going to go through that tonight when we get to the items under Agenda Item 5. So I just wanted to mention that. Okay, great. That's it.
All right, I have a few things I'd like to mention. I'm going to do it visually. John, just please. All right, so I just wanted to talk about a few things that have been happening in our community and highlight a few items on the agenda. So the first are a few events. So tomorrow is Mom's Night Out, and this event supports the Chappaqua Schools Foundation, and it's downtown, so there's still time to register if people are interested in attending. The second Jane had mentioned is we have our parent event on October 21st. Mark Brackett, he is the founder of the Ruler Approach, which is our district's anchor program for our SEL curriculum. So this is in conjunction with our PTA, and he'll be presenting to our elementary faculty after school, and then in the evening he'll do a keynote at 6:30. And then after that keynote will be symposiums that our parents can attend about helping and supporting our students with mental health and healthy lifestyle choices. So I'll send out a call tomorrow night to the community, just alerting them to this program verbally and reminding them to register in advance. So we hope that many of our families and our parents will choose to attend. We have some great speakers, and of course, our keynote is excellent as Jane mentioned. I want to thank Lori and the PTA and Adam for really facilitating all that has to happen in order for this event to take place, so thank you for that. On the fourth, we have the annual spelling bee. This is an opportunity for middle school, high school students and our community members to compete in a fun night. The Horace Greeley Scholarship Foundation sponsors this as a part of their fundraising efforts, and Friday is the deadline, so hopefully we have some contestants who will register and compete for the trophy. So let me just talk a little bit about Superintendent's Conference Day. So we had our faculty in, and we also were able to host staff from other districts to come to our leadership event today, our educational leadership event today. And this is a shift that we've been engaging in in our practice since June, where we've had the opportunity to invite our partners to come to our district to share in our learning. We feel like that's important for us because we're able to engage with colleagues from other districts and learn about successful practices that we can translate here in Chappaqua, and of course, that's reciprocated on their end. But also, it allows us to collectively talk about how to improve education as a global community, so we're really happy and excited that our colleagues had the opportunity to come and listen to our keynote today. We actually asked them if they wanted to stay, and we invited them to do that, so I wanted to mention that. George Kuros was our keynote speaker today, and he was amazing. And I want to thank Holly and Jane, you were able to attend, and we really appreciate that you were able to come. A lot of his work aligns with our profile of a graduate. It connects to our social emotional learning, and it also supports project-based learning in all of our spaces, not just our new spaces that came online. So we're really happy to be able to have our faculty experience George today, and he stayed throughout the day, and he held many sessions for members of our staff who wished to attend on different areas of interest outside of the traditional keynote. And then we had an extensive agenda where we had many faculty, staff, and administrators presenting to each other and engaging in shared learning. So I just want to take a moment to thank Adam for organizing our day and our professional development team. I mean, this was a tremendous opportunity for our staff, and the feedback was extremely positive, and I know our staff left today energized and inspired, and I think that has to not only do with our keynote experience, but the experiences that they had with each other, supporting the learning throughout our district. So, I mean, we really had a powerful day. We're really excited about it. Okay, so I want to make a shift to the agenda. So Anna was a graduate last year who entered into a Google Play competition to develop a theoretical application for students. So she entered into a contest, and the contest is targeted towards girls, and it's girls, supporting girls in the area of coding. So she entered into this contest with this idea that she was going to create or propose an application that supported girls engaging in practices that promoted kindness. And so the application itself had like a, I'll read her quote, "By having players help hurt creatures and respond to evil monsters, my game emphasizes that we should take an action to help those in danger and not simply be a bystander." So it's an application for young kids, and she actually won the competition. So because she won that, there's a donation on the agenda for Horace Greeley High School. So we're really thankful to Anna for supporting us in this way, for innovative mindset, that she was able to propose something that she won, and this was like a national competition, so it's really, it's really amazing. So maybe when she's back from college, I can get her to come to the Board meeting. We can honor her properly, right? So the Friends of Greeley Theater has a donation on our agenda tonight, and that's for the costumes in Cinderella. So as you know, we have a new drama teacher, and we've been in and out of his rehearsals, and it looks like it's going to be really exciting. And Cinderella's a great experience for our whole community to be able to be a part of, so November 21st, 22nd, 23rd, that'll be opening. So hopefully people will be able to save the date and attend that event, and we thank Greeley Theater for always donating and supporting our activities. And then finally, I just wanted to give John the opportunity to talk about this other property, which is on the agenda tonight.
Yes, and I think for the community, most of the people have heard about this property because we have been at the planning board for forever to get this approved. So we're finally at the final stage, even though we don't have the final approval, but I think we should be getting it by the end of this calendar year. And on August 7th, the Board already awarded contract to Julia B. Sotherby's. The only unknowns were the start date, end date, and the price. So now we have the date and the time, and we start tomorrow and then go for nine months, and the property is going to be set at $3.5 million. That's our proposed price, and that's the price that the sellers, they will be in marketing at, $3.5 million.
Thank you. All right, so before I introduce Adam and Andrew, who will be going over our assessment report, we have Alan here, our auditor, who's going to present to you tonight our audit. So, Alan, you can come on up.
I'll get him. I don't know. Must be. This one. Okay. All right, I'll go through that. Ready? Okay. Good evening.
Hi, Alan.
Hello. Tonight I'm going to give you an overview of the results of the June 30th, 2019 audit. So here's the calendar that took place for this year. The preliminary fieldwork was done at the end of May, and basically what that is, where we test the controls of the district, the cash receipts, the payroll, the journal entries. Then on May 29th, there was an audit committee meeting, where we basically go over and see if the audit committee has any issues that they want us to look at during the audit. The actual fieldwork was the week of July 29th. It lasted for a week. Then again, we had another audit committee on September 17th, where we went over the draft financial statements in detail, and tonight I'm giving you an overview of that meeting. Okay, so tonight we're going to go over some summary of communications, summary of the financial statements, the comments in the management letter, and then some closing comments. So within the summary of communications, there's a listing of auditors' responsibilities under the auditing standards. One of them is to form and express an opinion based on the results of our audit. We did that. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is known as a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you could receive. We're required to obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, which they were. Maintain professional skepticism throughout the audit. Conduct the audit in accordance with auditing standards, known as US GAAS. During the audit, there were no material errors, fraudulent financial reporting, or misappropriation of assets noted. There were no instances or suspicion or allegations of fraud. And included in this summary are management's responsibilities, which a few of them are to establish and maintain effective internal control. As I said before, there were no material weaknesses noted. Apply with the laws, regulations, grants, and contracts. Most of this has to do with the special aid fund, where you receive all those federal awards, and you're required to have what's known as a single audit, where we test the compliance for various programs. There were no issues there. Management has to make judgments in accounting estimates. They were all deemed adequate, and there were no significant audit adjustments. Continuing with the summary, there were no disagreements with management. There were no unresolved difficulties encountered during the audit. No consultation by management with other accountants, and PKF O'Connor Davies is independent with respect to the district in accordance with the relevant professional standards. And as I said, there were no irregularities or illegal acts noted. In the management letter, there was one comment. Basically, there are three levels of comment that are potential. One, it's a material weakness, which is the most severe, then you have significant deficiencies, or you can have a controlled deficiencies, which this one comment was, I mean, during the bid cycle, there were two bids selected that didn't have signed statements of non collusion. Aside from that, there were no other issues. I know most of you can't see that, but this is the general fund schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget to actual. Going across the top, left to right, you have the original budget, the final budget, the actual results, and then the variance with the final budget. So for 2019, the original budget for the revenues was $120,400,000. The final budget was increased slightly to $120,37,000, and the actual came in at $122,312,000, which generated a positive budgetary variance of $2,275,000 on the revenues. On the expenditure side, the original budget was $126,880,000. Again, that was increased slightly to $126,959,000, and the actual came in at $123,869,000, and that generated a positive budgetary variance of almost $3.1 million, which is only about 2.4% of the original budget, so it's not really that excessive. Then you have your other financing uses, which was a transfer out to the capital projects fund and to the special aid fund for $219,000. So the net change in fund balance at the end of the year was a shortfall of $1,776,000. But you should look across to the original budget column, where you see the bracketed $7,141,000. That includes an amount you appropriated from the '18 budget to balance the '19 budget, and it also includes encumbrances. Now what that means is that when you established this budget, you anticipated using $7.1 million, when in reality you only utilized $1.8 million. So on the total budget, you had a positive budgetary variance of almost $5.4 million. And then if you go back to the actual column, you see the shortfall of $1,776,000. You add that to the fund balance at the beginning of the year of $23,942,000. At the end of the year with the total fund balance of $22,166,000. Okay, here's the balance sheet. You have your assets on top. You have $24 million in cash. You have receivables of about $3.9 million. Most of that is basic accounts receivable and state and federal aid. You had prepaid expenditures of $1.4 million. Then you have your liabilities. The biggest liability is due to the retirement system of $6.3 million. That's due to the employee's retirement system and the teacher's retirement system. And then on the bottom portion of the page, you have your fund balance. You have a non-spendable fund balance for the same amount as the prepaid expenditures, because basically that's money you expended at the end of '19 for an expense that's going to occur in 1920. So that money, even though it's in the asset section, it's not available for use. You have your restricted fund balance of $9.9 million, and that's made up of reserve for tax surrogaries, a reserve for employee benefit accrued liabilities, which are your compensated absences. You have $1.5 million set aside for the employee's retirement system, and you have $1.6 million for future capital projects. Because of the larger reserves that you have, the balance of the reserves is $1.5 million, so that's $9.9 million. Then you have your assigned fund balance, which consists of encumbrances, which are purchase orders placed at the end of the year for which you haven't received the goods and services as of June 30th of $2,039,000. And you're also appropriating $3.8 million from this fund balance to balance the 1920 budget, okay? And your unassigned fund balance is $4,981,000, which is equal to 4% of the 2019/20 budget, which is the statutory limit in New York State. So again, your total fund balance is $22,166,000. And then just to close, again, we issued an unmodified clean opinion. There were no material weaknesses noted. The school district's rating with Moody's is AAA, which is not common for most school districts in the state, and you've appropriated $3.8 billion, an increase of $1.5 million from the amount appropriated from the '18 budget. Are there any questions?
Yeah, so regarding fund balance, you know, that's permanent, funds collected, not used.
Pardon me?
Fund balance is funds that we've collected, but we haven't used in the current period.
Well, most of it, of your fund balance, a good portion of it is set aside. They're non-spendable, you can't use that. The reserves, you could only use for the particular purpose for which they were established. And the amount, the money that you could use, that's pretty and clear, is the unassigned fund balance.
Correct.
And for school districts, that's 4%.
Where do we stand from a financial point of view? Are we high, are we low in jeopardy, or are we about right?
Based on your Moody's rating, I would say you're relatively high. AAA. Can't get much better than that.
Okay.
And there was only one management comment, so your controls are in place and they're acting accordingly, so there were no issues during the audit. The audit went very smoothly. The finance department was very well-prepared, and all the audits should be like this.
Alan, what's typical in variance for the fund balance? And at what point should we be concerned that it's too much of a variance?
In variance compared to what?
To what you generally see, or what would be appropriate, or at what point?
Well, within your fund balance, you have your various reserves which you established. There's also a teacher's retirement reserve, which the Board passed a resolution to establish. It's not being funded. There are limits on that. Most of the other reserves...
I'm looking at the $5.3 million figure, and the net change in fund balance as a variance.
Which figure are you looking at? Oh, the $5, oh, the excess, oh.
I'm wondering...
Okay, that's not excessive.
What can you tell us about that?
Okay, if you look at the revenues, the positive variance on the revenues was less than 2% of your budget, which means that the revenue side of the budget was prepared very conservatively, which it should be. Reason being, aside from the property taxes, you have basically no control over the revenues that come in during the year. So it's always recommended that the budget be prepared conservatively, which this was. It's less than 2% of your budget, okay, which is certainly not excessive. On the expenditure side, it's about 2.4% of your budget. So if you look at a number that's $3 million, it seems fairly large, but when it's only less than 3% of your overall budget, it's certainly not excessive, if that's what you're looking at. Combined, it's $5.3 million.
Okay, so that would account for, yeah, I mean, I understand what accounts for that. So because neither one of those are of concern, then the net, the net change is therefore not...
Well, there were certain things that happened during the year. You issued a bond earlier in the year, which you hadn't basically planned on or budgeted for, so there was a principal or an interest payment that occurred during the year. That wasn't in your budget, but the budget was strong enough to absorb it, so to speak.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, your reserves are adequately funded. There are limits on the amount of money you can put in various reserves, and I think you're pretty much, you're not at the limit yet, but they're very well, I mean, they're funded, okay, to the level that they could be.
So this is pretty much within the range of what would be considered acceptable in normal operations?
Right, I don't think there's any reason for concern.
Okay.
I think the best scenario would be, if you look at the actual numbers, would be your revenues number, the final number is higher than the expenditure. But I think what we experienced this year is that we had the shortfall of $1.7 million. And, you know, in the MDNA, in the financial statements, we, I actually stressed it several times, the reason was because we hadn't taken advantage of the Fed Fund rate. We were going into the second borrowing, the $26.5 million, and in March, you know, that's the time that we were getting indication that the Fed Fund rate may be going up. This is 2018. So we rushed it through, and by that time, the budget was put together, and we borrowed it in June. So we didn't budget for the first payment for '18, '19, and that's exactly $1.8 million.
Right, okay.
But we were strong enough to absorb that, but also we took advantage of the 25 basic points advantage, so our interest rate was actually lower.
Yes.
So that was, in the long-term planning...
We're saving money by doing that. That was good, that was good, right.
Plus also, if you look at the budget schedule, the bracketed $7,141,000, when you put this budget together, you anticipated utilizing that, okay? But in reality, you only used $1.8 million, and that's what generated the $5.3 million surplus in your budget.
And is that surplus within the realm of what is generally...
It's conservative. It's certainly not excessive.
It's conservative, but it's not of concern that we accumulated too much?
Absolutely not. No. Because of the circumstance that John just discussed with the issuance of the bond, you're going to save money down the road over the life of the bond by getting a lower interest rate. So you took a little hit this year, but it's certainly not of any concern.
It's not something that could have been controlled prior?
Oh, no.
Just to setting the budget?
Right, no.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't want people to come back and say, "Look, you overcharged." In fact, our tax levy was extremely low.
I think it was less than the cap, wasn't it?
Much less, much less. So...
It's like $0.9 or something.
Yeah. Okay.
Any questions? Great, thank you, Alan. I'm sorry.
The audit committee would like to make the recommendation to the Board to accept the audit as reported by Alan O'Connor Davies this evening, and as presented. I think we have to vote on that.
Do you want to vote now?
You want to vote now, because I think we don't have a resolution, so...
There's no resolution.
We can do it on the 30th.
We don't have a...
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct? That's how we usually do it. Present the audit tonight, and then we vote on the following.
No, actually, we had to vote today. The reasons, because today's, the reason we're having a meeting today is because tomorrow we had to report to the...
Oh, supposed to vote tonight.
So we should vote tonight.
So just the resolution.
That's right.
Because, you know, the presentation is all the approval.
Okay.
So I move that we accept the audit, and your report and presentation as O'Connor Davies presented this evening.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Wait, do you have discussion? Does anyone want?
Okay.
Okay. Bye. Okay, thank you, Alan.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, you want to come up and...
I'm going to move.
Oh, thank you, Alan.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
I think I'm going to leave, so you can deal with it.
Thank you, Alan. Oh, okay, so we're going to transition now to Adam and Andrew. So usually at the first meeting in October, or the last meeting in September, we have our assessment update for the Board of Education, and that's always done in conjunction with the high school principals. So, Adam, if you'd like to begin, that would be great.
If I could, thank you. So I have overall very good news to report with regard to our student assessments, just to give you a sense of how the presentation is laid out. We're going to spend a couple of minutes on the 3 through 8 testing program, ELA, math, and science. And then we're going to touch on some of our high school level exams, region's exams. We're going to touch on AP exams, and then give you some information on our graduates. So we'll move through and then give you an opportunity to ask questions at the end if you'd like. So let's start with ELA, math, and science. We give those tests, ELA and math are given to students, we're required by state regulation to give them for students in grades 3 through 8, and science is given in grades 4 and 8. So overall, the purpose of New York State testing is basically so we know what students know and can do in those areas at each of the levels that I described. The testing updates, there was nothing new last year in the 3 through 8 ELA and math tests. These things held true. These were some adjustments that they made back in 2016, so they held true, which was actually a helpful change from a number of years ago. Parent score reports for both ELA and math have been sent out to parents, they're accessible on the Infinite Campus Parent Portal, and then we also have science reports, just about ready to go. Those will go out soon, so they'll be available for parents. And so we're going to start with the 3 through 8 ELA tests, and I just have a short descriptor about what that test is all about. Basically, it has some multiple choice questions and some extended response questions. It's a two-day assessment for those students in grades 3 through 8. And then we have some trend graphs. You can see the different grades. We have four years' worth of data on here, and this data is basically showing us how our students performed in terms of a percentage of students that passed the exam with a score of a 3 or a 4. So the state describes a 3 or 4 as met the standard or exceeded the standard. I mean, you can see how those trends moved from 2016 to 2019, all the way over to the right. We're certainly keeping an eye on... We're certainly keeping an eye, overall, a very strong performance. We're keeping an eye on our 5th grade. We're diving into that data a little more deeply in terms of identifying areas that we might be able to strengthen. That would do very well when compared to the region across 5th grade, but that is a transition year for us, as you know. And so we're taking a deep look into the curriculum that we're offering in 5th grade, and actually starting with a curriculum push led by Jamie Edelman, our Director of Literacy, around more standard alignment in our Grade 5. So I think we anticipate seeing an increase there. And you can see our distribution, this is a distribution that we should be proud of. It's actually the first year in a number of years that the, perhaps even ever, I haven't gone back too far, but that the number of fours exceeded the number of threes. So last year, by about 20 students, that green bar to the right was shorter than the yellow bar that was to the left of it. So it's nice to see that shift up towards the right in terms of the number of fours compared to the number of threes, twos, and ones, as you go down. So the math test, I'm going to give you similar data. The math test also is a test that's given over two days in grades 3 through 8. And students are asked to solve math problems and respond to questions. There's actually quite a bit of reading on the math test, but it also incorporates a variety of reading charts and graphs and data tables and solving math problems, of course. So you can see the math data, again, laid out in a similar way to the ELA data. You see the percentage of students that were scoring proficient, which is a 3 or a 4. And you can see how those trends move from 2016 to 2019. And as we go, a strong performance in all of the grades. And again, you see that math distribution in terms of ones, twos, threes, and fours in those scores. And then we traditionally do very well on the science standardized test as well. This is grades 4 and 8. You can see them on the left side and the right side, grade 4 on the left, grade 8 on the right. And you can see our performance has been very strong over the years. And then this, we don't, we look at regional comparisons just to give us a sense, sometimes it gives us a good sense of the difficulty level of a test. We can see how our students compared to other students around the state. This latest year, 2019, where we have data is that blue line. You can see that blue line across the chart. This basically shows us a percentile rank of students that scored a 2 or a 3, so students that were proficient when compared to New York State. So you get a sense of where our students stacked up percentile-wise compared to other school districts across the state. And that, this gives us three years' worth of data. It's kind of hard to see the difference in the three years, but the blue line was the 2019 line. So we're going to transition over. I'm going to turn over to Andrew for...
Actually, is there any chance we could ask questions on that section of testing before you move on?
Would you like to go all the way through, or do you want to do it piece by piece?
It's up to the board.
I really have to you.
If there are questions on 3-8 testing, you might as well ask them right now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I just feel like they'll seem disjointed.
Yep, absolutely.
When you look at the proficiency comparison, you know, you said it's across the whole state. Do you have access to, like, our general area or districts that you consider comparable academically?
Yeah, I have all of that data. I can, through this data system that we subscribe to, we can get data for the region. We can get data for the BOCs that we're a part of, which is different than the region. And we can get data for similar schools, so similar demographic to us, we can get data.
And does this trend look the same on those levels, or have you not looked, maybe not looked at that?
Yeah, no, we have. We happen to be in a particularly high-performing pocket of the state. And so when you compare us across just the, you know, our BOCs, for example, which is 18 component school districts, or even this region, our ranking is very strong across the board when you look at it. But because it's such a competitive pocket of the state, it doesn't, we're not necessarily in the, like, in this case, like, the 99th percentile, it can drop. Because even if you have one district that scores above you, then you can drop, because there's only 18 districts, you can drop down by like 5% or 8% or something like that. So generally, we score very well when it comes to even our local component districts.
I'd be curious to see that, if you don't mind. I mean, if you've already looked at it, I'd be curious.
Yeah.
And the other question I had was with the ELA, math, and science testing, what is the opt-out rate?
So the, generally, it's very low as a district. We, last year, for our students in ELA, the participation rate was a 94%. The opt-out rate was less than 4%. It was a 3.9 for ELA, a 3.7 one of the days of math, and a 3.8 the other day of math. So, and then the other, the difference between that 4% and the 95% participation rate was just students that were typically absent because they were ill. So the opt-out rate is a 4%. I think in terms of just the nuance of the language, there really is not an option to opt out. They call it a refusal. So a student is refusing to take the test, or as a parent, is refusing to take the test. But I will say that this, these state tests do give us important information. It's a dipstick assessment of students, and we do get student reports that we share with parents, but we get a deeper dive into that data that even shows us an item analysis. So it does give us good information for students, so I'd encourage parents to have their students take it.
Thank you. I would just like to note that because we are an inclusive district, I mean, I like the comparisons and seeing what the percentile ranks are, but we are an inclusive district. And in Chappaqua, we have a higher percentage of special ed students taking tests, whereas in other districts, they get, you know, they're in different schools. They're more private placements in other districts. So I would just note that, you know, it's sort of, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Also, I'm curious as to the timing of getting the test results. Is it the same kind of timeframe that we had a few years ago, or has that improved?
In terms of when the New York State test...
So after the test is taken, we get the test results for those students in the following year?
That's right.
Is that still the case?
Yeah, I don't really see any trend to the, it getting earlier or later. It just seems, some years, it's embargoed longer, some years, the state holds on to that data for a longer period of time. I don't know why that is. Usually, we get that data at the end of August, the beginning of September, which is a challenging time to get it. It's nice to have it before school starts, so we can start to plan academic intervention services and extra supports, things like that. But usually, we don't have a lot of runway before the school year starts, if any at all. In some cases, I think this year is an example of it, that they didn't, they had that data embargoed. They released it to us at the end of August, but they embargoed it from parents for a couple of weeks, and then we were able to release it in September.
And to what extent are you able to use these tests for individual students? I mean, is it at all helpful to improve student learning in terms of individual, actual individual students?
Yeah.
As opposed to just showing us trends?
Yeah, it does give, it's, we have to keep it in perspective in that it is a kind of a dipstick on a day or two of a student's performance. We do get pretty comprehensive reports by student where you can see the questions from the test mapped to student performance. And we can actually see by student which, how students scored on any individual question. So it is helpful in a diagnostic way to understand what gaps a student might have in their learning. And we provide that data to some of our AIS teachers to be able to support students. It's only as good as the quality of the questions on the test, any given year, at any given time. And it's also helpful when the state releases the questions. They release about 75% of the questions. They don't release all of the questions. So to have a percentage of, or a question that a student got wrong mapped to a standard is helpful, especially if there are multiple questions mapped to that same standard, so you can identify if there's a gap with a student, and then potentially remediate that gap.
Can I just add, we're adding a third-party assessment system that will provide ongoing information to help drive instruction and make decision on students. So it'll be another data point. And at some point in the near future, because our staff just received training this afternoon, we'll show you how we'll be using that assessment system. And it also correlates to, and predicts very nicely to how students would perform on this assessment, so that we're not receiving scores at the end of the year and trying to support students at the beginning of the next year. We'll have real-time data to help support students throughout the course of the year.
Yeah, it's helpful.
Did you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you talk, explain to us about the 5th grade? The 5th grade, it seems like it's a little low.
Yeah, so we've been, we've been looking at, the good news, with this comparison data, the good news is that red, that red, significant red dip on the math chart is 2017, and so we've made some adjustments since there. Would you like me to speak to ELA, math, or both of those? Yeah. So we've taken a pretty deep dive into the data that we've gotten back in terms of doing a curriculum analysis, so we can start to identify, are there areas in our curriculum that we can strengthen? And what we found in both the ELA and the math is that those errors were spread pretty evenly across the curriculum, as opposed to having a couple of areas that we need to do a better job teaching, like specific discrete skills. And so the approach that we've taken in ELA especially, because we did see, the 5th grade data for our ELA, it is lower than the other grades. So we've really made a specific push in the area of bringing the units of study in from teachers, the Teachers College curriculum, which we use at the elementary levels, and loosely use at the middle school. We use it as a guiding document. We're really going to be more intentional about having fidelity to those units of study in 5th grade. We actually have a Teachers College professional developer working with the 5th grade ELA department this week coming in. So we're hoping that by having that curriculum be more consistent across the middle schools in ELA, we can strengthen that 5th grade data.
It just seems like Grade 5 is out of lap. Because if you look at, you've got multiple classes going on here, right? So if you follow one class from Grade 4, 5, and 6, it dips down and goes back up again.
Yeah, it does.
Does that have to do with just the transition into middle school? Like, for kids, that, would that make sense just psychologically and developmentally? Like, in terms of managing a different type of schedule and school day or whatever? I don't know if other districts would see a similar thing.
Yeah, we're, in a lot of cases, when we look at this data, kind of dive more deeply into it, we can identify discrete things that, in the curriculum, that we need to strengthen with regard to how we teach it, or when we teach it, or how long we spend teaching it.
Right.
In some cases, even, we can offer some targeted professional development for some teachers that need some extra support in, you know, particular content strands that they're teaching. Because of the way these errors are, like, distributed across the cohort, I, we're thinking that it might be something other than that. Like, other than increased curriculum fidelity, I think we need to do some work on that. That came out of Strategic Coherence Plan from a couple of years ago. So we're working on that across ELA. However, I think that that transition is a piece of it, right?
Yes.
Our students moving from a very different model in elementary school to a middle school, and seeing that dip. And you can see, and I know some of you pointed it out, you can see that cohort over time. So if you look at that yellow bar of one grade, and then you go up to the next grade, you can see that as a purple bar.
They make a big jump from 5 to 6.
And they do, like, they do recover, they rebound. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't address whatever's going on in Grade 5.
Right.
But it doesn't, it doesn't persist as a significant academic deficit moving forward with the other grades, so...
When are the tests done?
I'm sorry.
When are the tests administered?
They're administered in April and May.
So, I mean, we hope by April, May...
That's true, that's a good point.
In 5th grade, they'd be adjusted to middle school.
Yeah. And they do test that, or assess that content from the whole, you know, the whole year, including September.
And have you identified the areas of deficit?
Well, that's, that's been the challenge. It hasn't been as consistent as we sometimes find when we have curricular areas, where you have, you know, there was a number of years ago where we had a specific component of the math curriculum that had moved in the state curriculum, and we didn't move it. And so there was one, this is going back a few years ago, where there was one piece that we said, oh, we need to, it stood out. It was a big red, you know, big red square on the, on the report that said, this is, you know, this is the thing that all the kids missed, that the vast majority got all these other questions right, and this is the one that they didn't get right. But these errors are distributed more evenly across the assessment, which makes it more challenging with regard to fine-tuning your curriculum. But I think more fidelity to the Teachers College units of study in 5th grade will help, and more fidelity to the workshop model in 5th grade, which the kids are used to as they come out of the elementary school, will also help. So we're making moves in that direction.
Is this not necessarily a reflection of the student, you know, student potential in learning, but simply a discrepancy in our curriculum in what we feel is important in this grade versus what the state may be pushing? I mean, I'm wondering, is it a real deficiency, or is it? I mean, I'm just curious as to what the state is requiring in 5th grade, and whether we feel something else is more important at that stage of development? Because they seem to catch up.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm not quite certain whether fidelity to the Teachers College curriculum is, I mean, is that the answer, is what I'm asking?
Well, we've identified that as an issue.
Not necessarily.
So just to be transparent, during the strategic planning process, particularly at the middle level in terms of ELA instruction, we identified inconsistencies in the curriculum that was a significant issue for us.
Okay.
Which is a focus of Adam's work within the middle level. And we did not have the same concerns regarding math, so we're also seeing a dip, though, in 5th grade math. So we have to believe that the dynamic is beyond just teachers and their fidelity to the workshop curriculum. So further analysis is definitely necessary. To believe probably partly, Jean's feedback about the transition rings true to, as to why that is a testing year that is showing increased difficulty when compared to other years. And then you'll see, as those students transition into 6th grade, there's a huge amount of growth.
Right.
So you have to believe that there is some dynamic associated with their entrance into the middle level, and perhaps changing classes that could be impacting their scores. We just don't think we're ready right now at this meeting to say...
To determine exactly what it is.
This is what we think it is, but what you hear Adam saying is, we are absolutely looking at this with the full team to figure out what is happening in Grade 5 that we need to do differently, or to support our kids in another way to help support them as they take these assessments. And as we use NWA, the MAPS system, we'll start to see early on in September how we can help support our kids differently, because it'll identify skills that our kids are struggling with, that we'll be able to target instruction around. So that's another benefit of moving towards a system like that early on in the year, so we're not responding to what happens based on a test that's taken towards the end of the year. So we'll probably have better information for you going into next year when we share this information with you, because we'll have a different data point to show trends over time. Any other questions about, okay, Andrew?
All right, so we'll transition on to some Regents exams. Yep, thanks.
So the first slide here is a average score of English Regents over the last four years, including 2019. You can see we continue to do very well, same averages as the previous year, which is up a little bit from the, from the two years before that. This is the distribution in some percentages scored on the exams. So you see it's the percentage of students over four years earning scores in those brackets, 0.64, 65 to 74%, 75 to 84, and 85 to 100%. Continue to be very strong results, and continues that trend. Now, the same two slides for the Algebra Regents, last four years, the average scores of students taking the Algebra Regents here, slightly up in 2019 at 89. And then the distribution over four years in those different scoring brackets, again. So this slide lists the Regents exams taken. That's the, that's a column on the far left. The course that students are enrolled in that end in those Regents is in the second column there. And then we have a series of five years, and the average score is ending in the 2018 and 19 year. So what we have here is the potential scores on the AP exams, 1 through 5, and the number of exams taken at Greeley over three years, and the number of exams that scored in the various scoring ranges there. Seem very consistent. This is the full listing of the AP exams taken last year at Greeley, the number of exams, and then the average score out of five for each. This last slide is, is just some data on the class in terms of standardized testing in National American students and semifinalists and finalists. And this is for the class of 2019. And then we go back a couple of years for the ACT score averages, and then the SAT scores. Also, you know, our students continue to do very well. We don't yet have the 2019 ACT scores. I think they come out tomorrow. I just checked with Rebecca Mullen on the phone before I gave. And I think they'll be out tomorrow.
Why, can I ask why that would take so long for the ACT scores for that year, for that class?
I mean, they've been done with those scores for a long time.
I don't know.
Yeah.
To answer to that question. We just had our Department Chair of Guidance check in just to make sure we didn't have the numbers. We could add here at the last minute, and now they're still not available.
Those kids are in college already, and, yeah, that's very strange. Okay.
That's also, that's typically a number that we include on the profile.
On the class profile, exactly. So, will they change the class profile when that comes in?
Yeah, they can update it.
They will update it.
As this data comes in, we continue to update it.
Got it.
That's right.
Andrew, I'm curious how many students take an AP exam without taking a class?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have all the, if you go to the next slide, wait, yeah, no, the other way. I don't have data on all of that, but there are some-
We don't offer all these classes.
Right, right. So, right, so there are some, like, human geography that you could add. That student publicist says five, we don't offer that class. We did look up that exam, it looks like a really interesting exam, actually, but that would be an indication there. The ones that say fewer than five on them, you know, we don't actually give you the actual number, because if it's one student, then we're pretty much revealing that one student's score on it who took it. But those are some of the students in World History, for instance, that we don't offer. Economics, which we don't offer. Psychology, which we do offer again.
We do offer, right?
With the course.
It changes fact.
Which, which one?
AP Psych.
Psychology, you offer AP Psych, right?
Yep, we have it this year. Yes, we do have it.
Do we have it last year?
No.
Well, we have it before, a couple of years before, right?
Yep, we did have it a couple of years before that.
Okay.
Yep, we do, it is back in the curriculum now, and so you're going to see that number, which is fewer than five, it's going to be quite large for several sections.
Because in the curriculum, so if it was, I think if it was in curriculum, we'd have, we should have more than less than five people taking it. Can you explain what the difference between English Language Comp and English Literature Comp is?
Sure, I'm not an expert in that since I grew up teaching at Greeley, and we only give the lit exam. But that's an AP exam, which is literature-based, right? So, you're reading tons of novels, poetry, plays. The language is focused more on nonfiction, and focused more on the rhetoric of argument.
So, within the data for the number of exams where it's a high, so just looking, for example, at Biology, is it safe to assume or not that of those one hundred and sixty-seven students who sat for the exam, the vast majority actually went through the AP Biology course?
Yeah, I think it would be, I don't know that any student took it that wasn't in the course, I think that would be exceptionally rare.
So, it's only the ones with very few students where students might have sat for it without taking the course?
For the most part, yes. Occasionally, we might have an outlier student who's, who took it without taking a course that we offer.
Sometimes that happens with AP Calculus.
It has happened.
And-
Physics and things like that.
AP Physics.
And AP Physics.
But it's a small number.
Yeah, we had, so the year before, I think we had, oh, no, this year, I think we had three students take the AP Physics one, who weren't enrolled in the class. But very small number.
Two questions, just in terms of data points. Do you do a breakdown, like if you have, whether it's, I'm looking at the big numbers, like US History, Biology, Physics One, some of the ones where there are a lot of students. Do you do a breakdown by teacher and how the kids do coming out of that teacher's class?
Typically, that's not a sort of regular, everyday breakdown that we do in terms of that. There have been occasions where we've looked at testing results across teachers and sections to clean a little more information.
Right, because I'm curious, like especially in a very, like, a curriculum like that, where it's very defined, but, you know, it's an AP curriculum, whether students in a particular teacher's class are performing better, because I think that's something we should maybe look at, if, you know, in terms of their test results? I don't know. Does that happen in other, like even with the ELAs? Like, does it just go by grade, or does it go?
You know, we dig into that data in a lot of different ways. So, we do at the, for the other assessments that ELAs mass, we do look across the buildings, we look across the teachers in the sections, mainly to support people. So, we have the whole, the team of professional developers that can provide that support, so we can do an item analysis by teacher and provide the support that they need. We don't typically, at the PD level, we don't typically do that for the AP assessments at Greeley, but we certainly would have the capability to do that kind of analysis if there was something that indicated to us that there's something we should look at.
But that's what the AP PR was all about.
Yeah, I guess it's, I guess it's the-
To score teachers based on test results.
Right. It's not so much for them, it's more for, like, because it's an AP curriculum, it's an outside curriculum like that, I'm just curious.
So, I mean, that caused a whole host of issues philosophically about the fairness of judging the quality of teaching.
I think it's very, I'm sorry. I think it's very fair to say that when we make decisions about who's teaching what course load-
Right.
We take into consideration their experience and their ability to teach students at the AP level.
Right, okay.
And then we ongoing, do ongoing assessments on how our students are doing on those tests, and then make decisions based on what we know about the program and what the program needs, which incorporates how students perform on these assessments that are very important.
Are there, have there been any decisions, like, you know, I'm not surprised, just seeing, like, there are some low test results here, like European History or whatever, is that senioritis? Is that, you know, like, what, like, I'm curious whether, you know, that happens, because it's a senior-level course, are they traditionally less because of that? I don't know.
I, yeah, I don't know if we can say that across all senior-level courses. Calc AB is largely a senior-level class as well, but-
Right, and they're doing quite well, so.
But we, but we, you know, we do know, these exams, while important and rigorous, don't play into application processes unless a student chooses to put them on application.
Right, right.
So, they're not college entrance exams. And I would say, it's fair to say that when you have a large group of seniors taking an AP exam at the end of the year, and they're already in college, you know, their motivation for, you know, can wane depending on the student, and that's an individual student.
Right, I totally understand that.
And so, I think, you know, I think, to be honest, there would be a factor in that plays into the score. So, that's why we don't always want to look too much into the scores-
Right.
-as an indicator of, let's say, the quality of teaching in the class.
Right, and the knowledge base that they've gained, et cetera.
I think we do have some work to do in thinking about, you know, intrinsic motivation throughout this ring commitment.
I'm assuming also, based on sort of the timing of the APs and when the scores are released, that even for the non-seniors taking APs, these scores don't factor into their grade for the class? Because they don't have them in time for them to factor in.
Yeah, and-
Like, these aren't a final, the way that a Regents might be a final for a class.
That's correct. They don't factor into the students' grades in the course either, no.
Could we go back to the Algebra slide? I just want to remind the board that we opened up enrollment to eighth grade, and you'll see there wasn't a significant impact-
I know, that's great.
... on the distribution of scores. So, it just, it lends itself to the research that open enrollment doesn't have a negative impact on assessments.
Right, because these are motivated students that are maybe opting in, that wouldn't have had an opportunity, and they're doing just as well.
And I appreciate Josh Block and the principals at the time for helping push those conversations. My first year here, to be able to be in a place today where we're actually able to accomplish open enrollment in grade eight, that can, we can sit here and show you that our kids did fine.
Right.
Even the ones that weren't recommended, who went into the class and overrode the recommendation process, so.
If you go to the-
It's good.
And along those lines, may I ask if that happened as well? Because I know that you opened that up in the high school, and let's say, like, for the first one, they take AP History, has it changed the number of kids who maybe didn't get a high enough score to bypass the Regent? Has that stayed constant?
Yeah, we actually looked into that data, and if I'm correct, in the answer we got, we don't have any students who took AP US History that then took the Regents' exam.
This year, right?
That's right, yeah, this year. Right, they all used the AP US Regents' exam to account for, sorry, the AP US History exam to count for.
So, no one got below a three?
Well, the data we had was for June, I think, wasn't it for June? So, there may have been some students who took it in August, but we just asked that question, because if you look at the, is it the, go to the next slide, so when we, yep, back to that, yep. So, when we had the AP American History there, and it goes over to the 2018-19, says NA, the question we had when we went back to John Gorman was, why is that NA? And he said, that's because we actually don't have any scores for students enrolled in American US History for the Regents. I didn't dig into the August Regents as well, and so we may have had some students taking it then. But typically, what we would have is some students who, as they lead into, or they've taken the AP exam, they would say, gosh, for insurance purposes, I really want to take-
Oh, I'm going to take it anyway.
I'm going to take in June, because you don't have the AP results before that.
Right.
That, from what we received, didn't appear that that's what happened this year.
Okay.
Now, I don't know how many students received scores later in the summer, and then subsequently registered for the August Regents. I didn't take a look at that yet.
Got you, okay.
But certainly wasn't a big number. So, we haven't seen, like, a huge shift at all.
Right, so, everybody that took that class voluntarily seems to have done just fine.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, I know we opened up AP also, right? We would extend, we opened that more. So, it doesn't look like according to that, you've had any issue with that.
Right, right.
I just do want to share, with open AP enrollment, that doesn't mean there aren't prerequisite classes that kids need to take, right?
Sure.
So, that makes it a little bit different than Algebra, because all students have the prerequisite for Algebra going into grade eight.
Right.
But, yeah, I think it was a step in the right direction. It was a tremendous amount of work and trust on behalf of the faculty, but I appreciate them moving in this direction. It was a huge shift for the district, but I think it was the right decision.
It looks like your research is paying off.
Mm-hmm. I'm impressed with all these kids that are taking these tests that have never taken a class.
Oh, I know.
There's a bunch of them in there.
Yeah, I know.
So, kudos to them.
Yeah, it's amazing, yeah, it really is.
Thank you, Andrew and Adam. We really appreciate your report.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Okay, we are on to committee reports. I will start out by saying that we did have our first meeting of the Communications Committee on September twenty-sixth, that's myself and Holly. What I wanted to report is that we moved ahead, thanks to a lot of help from Tony, with the plan to hire a public relations consultant and specialist. Now, we do obviously have a full-time communications person here, but we really felt, and we've talked about this for a long time, in terms of increasing our communications profile, having a specialist in this area that's on a consultant basis to help us, you know, generate content, work with some design graphics on our website, to push out information to the local media outlets, information on all the innovative programs we have here, good news to report, they will help in times if we have a crisis situation or a press release. So, we are, you know, hoping to find someone that will assist us in increasing our profile, follow the good stuff. We are looking through some resumes and writing samples now, and we will move ahead with this and report back. Any other committee reports? Policy?
Policy is on the agenda. I guess we covered audit, but I don't know.
John, should I give an update of the Green Committee?
Sure, that'd be great.
So, the Green Committee, we met last week, and the representatives from the schools, each of the schools in terms of an administrator or a teacher representative, as well as the student group from Greeley, previously known as the Stop Club, or changing their name to the Sustainability Club. So, they presented all different projects and initiatives that they have going on in their buildings, which included a lot of revisiting the recycling greenhouse works and plantings. And the Greeley Club gave a very nice presentation of some of the things that they like to see, and they're definitely looking at a bigger picture than some of the individual schools are, and they are really advocating for us to take a look at sustainability being a value that we explicitly state in the district. And obviously, we're living that to a good degree with our solar project, and the geothermal exploration, and the composting and recycling. But they'd like us to consider more explicitly making it a value of the district, and they're looking to do that at the school as well. And the other big thing that they were talking about was environmental literacy, and so also making it a education for sustainability, and not just going through the motions because someone has told you to. And those are, those are the things that I wanted to highlight. Did you want to add anything, John?
No, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Anything about facilities, or anything that needs to be addressed?
I think we just have one thing, is that the first tour is scheduled, so we're trying to find a second date.
Can someone send an email?
I know, I don't think it was-
Because I think it's very confusing.
Yes, we would, I think October twenty-sixth, or-
I think it's October twenty-ninth.
I have that date, but I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure that we had-
Twenty-ninth, yeah. We sort of put a hold on it, but I don't think it was confirmed, yes.
But Lisa wasn't here, and Theresa, we were in transition between Lisa and Theresa, so maybe that's what happened.
So, we'll send out another email regarding the twenty-ninth, and then we try to find a second date.
Okay, great.
Also, I'd like to give a quick report back on the promoting mental health for all programs.
Oh, go ahead, yes.
But I thought there was some, a couple of interesting takeaways. I don't want to be too redundant, because I described the program last time, but this was, this took place on October tenth, and by coincidence, it was on the World Mental Health Day, so that was great. And there was a theme in this district, Mark Brackett is coming, so we discussed some of Mark Brackett's work. It was presented by Dr. Andrew Ecker, who's Coordinator of Guidance, and the Child Study Center at Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses. He talked, he had an interesting point of view, and he talked about not getting too bogged down by a lot of overwhelming statistics on mental health, but he had this concept of finding bright spots, and seeing, you know, taking examples from every district to see what worked, and learning from that. So, we had the President of the Byram Hills Board of Education, Scott Levy, who talked about challenge, success, and ruler, and I know we're doing, we're doing a lot of this work as well. Dr. Ray Sanchez, Superintendent of Ossining, talked about the community school models. They have a different sort of demographics there, they have a large immigrant population, and the community school models work, works really well for them, but it addresses the needs of adults as well, and I'm not so sure that that model really should be limited to, you know, communities with certain kinds of demographics, and maybe that model could be looked at across the board, because parents do need help, and parents are the ones who have, you know, a lot of contact with their kids, obviously. And we had Dr. Mary Ansee, Principal of the Haldane Middle School, talk about dialectical behavioral therapy, which is a focus on mindfulness, and making sure that your kids are in the right place mentally before you begin your classroom, you know, before the curriculum can be engaged. I thought that was interesting. And then we had Susan Howard, Principal of Barcliff Middle School, talk about mental health first aid. And I thought this was an interesting takeaway, because teachers are usually on the front lines of mental health crises, and there's a lot of discussion about whether a child is going through usual teenage angst, or whether they are in an actual crisis where they need intervention, and how are teachers supposed to know where the difference lies, and they're not mental health professionals. So, this is a program that teachers can take part of, it's an eight-hour training session, and, you know, come out of that with the Valuable Resource Book for Adults, and the teachers who engaged in that found it very useful. I don't know if any of our teachers have done that, but it sounded like a really good program to look into. So, that was basically the program. I don't want to get into too much detail here. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to give out more information.
Thanks for attending.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we are moving on to public comment period. As you know, we welcome public comments, and with respect to each other's time, we ask to limit your comments to three minutes. You can contact us via phone or email, and after the public comment period, the board may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments made and presented. Go ahead, hi Lori.
Hi, Lori Townsend. Just here to give you an early thank you on behalf of the PTA and the community. Next week is Board of Education Appreciation Week.
Okay.
And we will be looking for-
All right, thank you.
And I noticed you are not having a meeting. But we'll be looking for ways to recognize and thank you, but I just want to underline that today, and say that we appreciate your incredible level of time and commitment and leadership. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, on to approvals and ratifications. Item three point one, be resolved that the board, actually, I would allow- Item 3.1 be resolved at the board, actually, I would like to take 3.1 through 3.3, since these are minutes from September 19th, September 25th, and October 8th. Can I have a motion to approve items 3.1 through 3.3?
I move 3.1 through 3.3. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 3.4, policy 5060, education of students in temporary housing and unaccompanied youth. This is our second reading and adoption. I think, Christine, you had opened up if we had any comments or changes, and I don't, I think we had morphed everything out.
I think we, I move that we.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to ask for a motion on 3.4?
Yes, sure, I just was double checking that we were good. Yep, I'll take a motion on 3.4.
I move that we accept the policy 560, 3.4.
I second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we have to, you know, we looked at the last meeting, this is pretty much pro forma, stated more, so we have to accept it the way it is.
Okay.
I think a couple of little changes based on.
But there's not a lot we can change, because there are things that have to be in there.
No, based on input, so I think we're good the way it is.
I think we discussed it at length at the last meeting.
Right.
So.
Thank you for the clarity, I know you guys had to go through a lot on that. So all in favor of 3.4?
Aye.
Aye. And then 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
I will second 4.1. Any discussion? All in favor?
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented. I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.2 non-instructional.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
Okay, here we go, so bear with us, since we're making a change for tonight, so thank you all. First off, I would like a motion to remove item 5.2 from the table. We tabled this at the last meeting, I'd like to remove it from the table and put it into the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Aye, so move. I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have one other motion, which is to remove item 5.7 from the consent agenda and to table that for future discussion. I will move to table item 5.7, can I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so on to recommended action other, item 5. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included here in this consent agenda. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent of schools. So these would be items 5.1 through 5.11, taking out item 5.7, which we just tabled.
Can I just ask a quick question about process on this?
Sure.
Do we only need to pull something out of the consent agenda if we want to have it voted on separately?
Yes.
But we can still discuss?
Discuss it as part of it, but it only is pulled out if you feel it has to be voted on separately.
Okay, thank you.
So we still have an opportunity to discuss, excuse me. So can I have a motion for the consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as recommended. I second.
Is there any discussion on the items in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
I'd like to thank the friends at Greeley Theater for their very generous gift for the Harsh Greeley Theater Department, for Cinderella, and thank you to Anna Zanigan for participating and.
And winning.
And winning and gifting $15,000 to our district.
Yes, and if Anna is, you know, by chance watching Board of Education meetings in college, great job.
I also don't know.
Great job, and thank you, thank you for.
We're very appreciative of Anna, I want to know if she gets any prize.
Oh, yes, she gets $15,000.
What does she get, I just want to make sure it's matched, and, you know, because there was no mention of that, and I thought that seems crazy if she's not getting a nice, a nice prize as well.
Also, just to add one thing, is that she actually had a choice to select an entity to receive this $15,000.
Really?
And they, and she designated the school district.
So she could have chosen her college?
Another community.
Community organization.
They could have another community entity or anything.
Wow, that's great. So, thank you, Anna.
I'd love for the kids in the district to hear somehow that, that she won this prize, because I think that would be really motivating.
You know what we'll do, we'll put her in one of our newsletters.
Yeah, that would be great, a picture of her and a little blurb, and I think she should be featured and appreciated, absolutely.
And that she designated us over someone.
Fantastic. That's really excellent. Anything else that anyone would like to discuss in the consent agenda?
I, I'm glad that we can accommodate the Austining School District and include some of their ski team members so that they could participate.
Yes, we've been doing that for a couple of years, that's worked out very well, and I'm really glad that we can continue that, absolutely. Okay, all in favor of our consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, facilities. The board was just to acknowledge the following change orders, which were approved by the superintendent for board resolution adopted June 14th of 2017. 6.1 is a change order for, as part of our, you know, continuing construction at Bell Middle School and change, and in the amount of $10,546.80. 6.2 is a change order with regards to construction of seven bridges, and that's the amount of $5,573.65. Can I have a motion for items 6.1 and 6.2 to acknowledge the change orders?
I move we acknowledge the change orders approved by the superintendent.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Financials, I'd like to take 7.1 through 7.4. These are asking for the, or to accept the revenue status report for September 2019, the appropriation status report for September, the quarterly central treasurer's report for extra classroom activities accounts as of September 30th of 2019, and the quarterly central treasurer's report for team accounts as of September 30th of 2019. Can I have a motion for items 7.1 through 7.4?
I move items 7.1 through 7.4.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Notice the future meetings, our next meeting will be Wednesday, October 30th at 7:30 PM here in the academic commons, and then our meeting after that will be Wednesday, November 13th at 7:30, also in the academic commons. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:17 PM?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 9:17.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you so much.